You're tuned into Inside Lowell. Inside Lowell Podcast, brought to you in part by Washington Savings Bank, serving the greater Lowell community for over 130 years. Make the switch now to Washington Savings Bank. Reverie 73, Lowell's number one cannabis shop. Elevate your cannabis experience at Reverie 73. Hafners, heating and cooling homes and businesses for nearly a century. Hafners, it kicks. And by Boston North Company, restaurant and retail solutions for your business. That's Boston North. And now, time for another Inside Lowell Podcast. Inside Lowell, if Lowell is your home, this is your place.
Hello again, everyone, and welcome to another Inside Lowell Podcast. I am your host, Teddy Panos, back from a brief escape, rested, somewhat tanned, but definitely ready to get back into the flow of things here in the Mill City, and definitely ready to get back into election 2023. It's now just, well, a little over two months away, and a number of interesting races that we'll be covering here at Inside Lowell. We've got debates set up between the candidates in the districts, and hopefully some of the at-large seats as well. We're also still introducing you to some of the candidates who are seeking office for the first time in the city of Lowell, or in the case of our current guest, seeking office again in the city of Lowell, but seeking a new office. Let's welcome in Fred Bahu, Greater Lowell Regional Technical High School, school committee member. From here forward, Freddie, it's going to be called the VOK, okay? Because we're old enough to remember the VOK, because I'm not going to say Greater Lowell Regional Technical High School over and over again.
Sure, sure. We like to call it the Tech, but that's okay.
Call it the Tech, alright.
Yeah, that's nice and it's softer.
It's certainly become more of a technical high school than the VOK slash joke that we used to make fun of in the 80s in the Drakehead School. So kudos to all of you who've been part of that growth and transformation. Good to have you here, man.
Thanks, Teddy. I really appreciate being here.
Alright, so you're running for, putting aside the VOK seat, the Tech seat, you're running for Lowell School Committee in what I believe is District One, that kind of, the combined district of Pawtucketville and the Upper Highlands.
That's correct.
The only race on the school committee that is actually a race. Every other district counselor and the two at-large school committee members, Jackie Darden and Connie Martin, are running unopposed.
And that's sort of sad. That's sad to me.
Why did you, why did you decide to be the only, the only fish jumping into that pond?
Yeah, well, it really wasn't about, you know, the only fish jumping in. It was just something that I felt was necessary for Lowell Public Schools. The most important subject to me, and you're probably going to ask me the question, is about vocational programming. And we turn away over at Greater Lowell Tech, we took in 1,400 applications this year, and we could only accept 600 students, so we're turning away 800 students almost annually. And I know that there's a, you know, a very large dropout rate, you know, in Lowell Public Schools. So I felt like, you know, Lowell Public, and I've been feeling that for a while, that Lowell Public needs vocational programming. I've spoke to some of the other school committee members, but I just don't know that they have the, the knowledge on how to sort of create that. So I believe that I could be extremely helpful in helping them develop a vocational programming rate, vocational programming studies, as well as really begin to sort of limit your dropout rate, increase your graduation rate, get students job-ready. So that was my motivation, and of course, there's other motivating factors. One of them being, there's a $400 million building project going on, and you know, I was part of a $60 million renovation project. And I think that's something that the school committee, the superintendent people need to have dialogue about that pretty regularly, because we are spending an awful lot of money, and everybody's seen their tax bills go up. So that's important to me, as well as our school, the amount of students that are in the Lowell Public Schools. I think it's been pretty stagnant over the past few years, and I, that sort of is something that needs to be considered. So, you know, those are, those are some of the reasons why I chose to run.
So a lot to unfurl there. Let's, let's get into it. First off, you could, if, if November goes properly, hold two school committee seats. Is the plan to continue to do that at the same time? Will you continue to serve on the Tech Board and the Lowell Public School Board if elected?
Absolutely. I think it's the best way to go ahead and create, you know, what I'm trying to do, and be able to use the resources of both school committees, as well as both superintendents, so that we can go ahead, begin to have dialogue between the two schools.
Okay. I believe it's been done before, but let me play devil's advocate, though. Should you hold both seats nowadays, where you could theoretically be competing for students, right? I mean, the, the VOK, an awful lot of students leave Lowell Schools, along with Drakehead, and it was Dunstable and Pepperell, do I have the right communities?
Tingsborough, yeah. No Pepperell, but Tingsborough.
So they leave the public school system of these towns and of Lowell, and, and enter this school here. Some folks think that hurts the school system. Do you believe that you might be conflicted in some way by serving on both?
No, I think actually that's the best way to go ahead and create the best programming and have the most dialogue. Unfortunately, Lowell Public Schools do not work with us. We work with them, and you know, in a small way, with the after-doc program that we offer, which is, you know, a, a program after school where some kids can enter and get vocational programming, but there needs to be more dialogue. And if I were on both school committees, I could easily have that dialogue and begin to help grow the public school systems for all students, not just for a segregated amount of students.
So that's a unique approach. How would you, how would you accomplish that? How can you get the Lowell Public Schools to work in collaboration with the VOK and, and actually benefit each other? How, how do you see that playing out? How do you implement that?
Well, the simplest way realistically is I would have the ear of both superintendents. So you could create the dialogue between the two superintendents of, you know, working together, working collaboratively, you know, for the benefit of students across the region. And secondly, I would be on both school committees, so I could put in motions and, you know, the motions that would say, hey, we would like to start a certain program over in Lowell Public Schools, and we offer it here, but I need the school committee's approval, and we need to vote on it as a body. So that is something that I could sort of be a part of, that would go ahead and be beneficial to the two school districts.
So how would it work? If you're able to successfully get everybody to collaborate, say a student is going to Lowell High and taking most, most classes within the building there, how would they get into the vocational programs? Or would you build, would you want completely separate facilities and different programs within the Lowell High School footprint, and then the, the rest that already exists to some degree in the, in the VOK footprint?
Right, yes. No, we, of course, we're building a brand-new high school over there. Well, you know, we're renovating it, and we're taking in, we're building a high school that's going to hold as many as 37, 3800 students. And, you know, their numbers are down and such like that. There are some vocational programs where you don't really need as much space, like a carpentry shop, you need a lot of space, a painting shop, you need space, culinary, cosmetology, you need a lot of space. Those are not the programs that I'm looking to go ahead and start over within the Lowell Public Schools. I'm looking at programs like, I'm trying to think. Sorry about that, everyone. Criminal justice. So right now, you know, criminal justice would be essentially like an Air Force ROTC, and you would begin to train students for a Chapter 74 program of criminal justice. And that program would entail just the size of a classroom. It's not going to need any more space. Now, the why a criminal justice program, which of course is, like I said, is Chapter 74 approved, is because, you know, on my Facebook page, you know, the Sheriff Katusian, the Sheriff's Department, Department of Corrections says, hey, listen, we need, we need security guards, or we need guards, and, and we start at $60,000 a year. So, you know, they don't have enough guards. So to have a criminal justice program could be very beneficial. Also, I just ran through the airport, and I had to go through security checks. There's not enough TSA employees. So that type of program would work, and you wouldn't need the conventional vocational space. Secondly, there's also the cybersecurity. Cybersecurity is something we don't offer at Greater Lowell Tech, and that's going to take, need more beefed-up computers. So if you have, you know, more powerful computers, you can begin another Chapter 74 program and start those programs. So, so space constraints, even though Lowell is not building it for those constraints, we can develop programs that have smaller space requirements.
Okay, so you're not necessarily talking about implementing the same programs that are currently at the VOK and Lowell High. You're looking at vocational programs that have been approved but aren't implemented at the VOK, starting at Lowell High and becoming an option? Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. But you know, but, but could we do some dual programmings? Because we, you know, our big, you know, one of our biggest waitlist programs is anything in the medical field. So, you know, could we go ahead and get, you know, Greater Lowell Tech School Committee to say, sure, we're having, you know, we have a real long waitlist to get into the, a nursing program, to get into our medical assisting program, to get into our license program. Therefore, could we go ahead and, you know, start a nursing type of program over at Lowell High School with the blessing of Greater Lowell Tech and the superintendent and the school committees and have that discussion? Absolutely, we can. So, you know, there's always going to be more growth opportunities.
Okay. Do you, do you believe that there can be enough collaboration? You, I mean, you've, you've served on the, the board now over there at Greater Lowell, what, 10 years?
13.
13 years, okay.
Nice mercs.
And I'm sure you know.
Very happy to be doing it, too.
You know all the people involved in Lowell as well, obviously. So is this something you've roached in the past? Has it, how has it been received? Has it been received?
I think there's sort of like a, I don't want to call it a great divide, but you know, there's a loss of communication there. We have meetings with each other personally. We talk about it, me being on the VOK side, you know, with the Lowell School Committee side here in Lowell, and somewhere, you know, it just, the ball gets dropped. You know, maybe they're not motivated to have that conversation. Maybe I'm not motivated to say, hey, listen, I need to talk to your superintendent, and your superintendent doesn't want to meet with me, and so on and so forth. And I'm a bit naive, because I've been a hard worker, right? And you, Teddy, you've run your own business for a long, long time, as I have. And with that being the case, I'm a person that likes to create dialogue and likes to create, you know, opportunities. With that being the case, I, being naive, it could be an uphill battle. However, realistically, I think it's a necessary battle, and I'm sure that it could, it will work out for the benefit of the school district.
You'd need some buy-in from the educators as well, the teachers in the classrooms, and you'd have to work, I would assume there'd be some type of things that would have to be worked out with the unions. Different unions, right? The, the different union representative, oh, he does same union?
All together, different union.
Okay. So you'd probably need some collaboration there.
Sure. Well, we're going to need, we're going to need certified teachers to teach these programs. So, you know, we're going to have to sort of try to find those certified teachers. So that's important. Now Lowell has a marketing program, and Lowell, Lowell Public Schools has a marketing program, and Lowell Public Schools has a culinary program, but they're not Chapter 74 approved. So we want to get them Chapter 74 approved, so when a kid walks out with a dual certificate, you know, he's able to go ahead and hit the ground running, and he or she, and be able to be job-ready. So, yeah, so some of the programs would be dual, but they've already got it at Lowell High School. So we're not, you know, we wouldn't be pulling anyone from Greater Lowell Tech.
You said he, and then she. We talked about this off-air, and I want to touch on this. I think it's a very important part. The Lowell, the VOK student bodies, what, about 2,400?
That's correct.
You had said, what percentage is boys, what percentage is girls?
It's pretty even.
Is it 50/50?
It is. It's pretty even, because we do have, you know, CAD, we do have cosmetology, we do have nursing. So, you know, a lot of the, you know, female, female students like to get into those programs, in the carpentries, in the electrical, in the masonries. Those were more of the primarily boy type of programs. You know, but I do have that information, if you want a real hard number. I can look that up in a second.
I would love to look at it, particularly because in our off-air conversation, as we were just kind of getting comfortable here in the studio, you mentioned that the graduation rate for boys at the VOK is 95%.
Right.
Is it similar for, for girls?
Yes, 95% graduation rate. The boys are about 93, and the girls are about 97.
All right. What's the number at the, at Lowell Public Schools?
Lowell Public Schools' overall graduation rate is 80%. The girls are graduating more 85 to 87%, and I have the numbers on my phone here, and I can look them up. But what's very alarming to me is the boys' graduation rate is 75%. So I'm looking at that as a 25% dropout rate. And having a 25% dropout rate for boys, you know, where are they going if they're not graduating?
That's the number that jumped out at me, and I would imagine there's always been some level, once kids turn 16, they don't have to go to school.
That's correct, of course, yes.
So there's something, I would imagine it's existed historically. I'd love to see how today's number compares with that historic number. But also, as you kind of are pushing this vocational program, even for Lowell Public Schools, maybe that's the way to keep these kids engaged, keep them in school five days a week, keep them in a, in a classroom, and have some kind of adult supervision, mentorship that they can look up to, where a lot of your, you know, your urban public school students coming from, you know, single-family homes, broken homes, lord knows what other types of environments. In your belief, is your number so high at the VOK because of the type of programming you offer, as to the traditional public school programming?
We are totally engaged with our students. And our students are going to trade programs 50% of the school year, as well as academic programs 50% of the school year. So, you know, kids want to be there, and they know how hard it is to get in. Therefore, you know, they really push to better themselves. And then the shop teachers really try to get them motivated, keep them motivated, to progress and get themselves life skills that will be, that could become employment opportunities for them. And you did touch on Lowell for a second, and yes, let's be real. I mean, if I'm a ninth-grade kid or an eighth-grade kid, and I put in an application, and, you know, and my application gets denied, and I'm forced to go to a school that I really don't want to go to, but I'm sort of going there in the ninth grade, and I sort of, I'm trying to get by, and I'm trying to make it all work, and then I'm falling behind a little bit. And then in the sophomore year, and I'm sort of 15 years old, and I'm sort of, you know, getting the Cs and the Ds, and just trying to get by, I get a little discouraged. So by the time I'm 16 years old, I say, Mom, I hate school. I don't want to, I don't want to be a part of it anymore, because it's not doing anything for me. And look at my grades, why did I just go to work? And Ma says, okay, sure, you know, because that's very common. I have the numbers on my phone, I should have brought in the paperwork. I did have the hard paperwork in my car. But the dropout rate in Lowell Public School for boys in the junior year is 10%. It's a large number, you know? And then it equals overall over 25%.
It interests me, because I've seen a personal anecdote up in close, and personally, a son of a former employee of ours who's still in the area here, just, school was not going well for him. You know, we tried to talk to him and whatnot, but ultimately, he ended, he's ended up in a UTEC program, Culinary Arts Program, ironically. And the difference in this young man in the last year, year and a half, is startling. But it also bothers him to me that kid has to go outside the Lowell Public School system for this to happen. I would have sent him to the VOK in a heartbeat, had I known this was his issue. I'd have said, try to get in there, and then I would have pulled any string I could have. But it, it's striking me now that this would be something beneficial to be able to offer. Not every kid's going to stay. Look, some, some kids are in a situation that they can't. But whatever number you keep in, it doesn't hurt you to keep it in the school system.
But if we could take an 80% graduation rate and make it an 85% graduation rate over a period of time, or even an 89% graduation rate, and get kids' work ready, and get them to work with their hands, and get them to feel like they, that they're really growing within themselves, it's going to be most beneficial to the public school district, no doubt about it. And, and it's going to be beneficial for the kid, because that student's going to be able to start a job for 60 grand a year, or 50 grand a year, in respect to working at Walmart, or Target, or McDonald's, or being on a landscaping crew, and being a little, you know, and only able to work some days. So it's such a great opportunity for them.
All right. We're chatting with Fred Bahu, candidate for the Lowell School Committee, District One seat, that combines the Pawtucketville and the Upper Highlands District, fit as an Upper Highlands resident. By the way, the incumbent there is Stacy Thompson, a Pawtucketville resident, if I'm not mistaken. You touched on, you touched on the union, so let me get your thoughts on the teacher's contract that we reported about a month ago, before it got finalized here in the city of Lowell. What did you think? Did the, did the teachers hoodwink the school committee? Or did the school committee get the best of the teachers? Because I, I've heard teachers who are really upset at the deal, and then I've heard some other folks out there saying, man, they keep giving away the store to the teachers' union. What do you think, as somebody who's had to negotiate these contracts, then vote on them?
I've been on negotiating teams throughout the 13 years that I've been at Greater Lowell Tech. They're, they're, they're very demanding, being, you know, negotiating a new contract every three years is very demanding, and you really want to work on behalf of the teachers. You want to, because the teachers work hard. When I came in as a private, a business owner, you know, I, I sort of would say to them, I'm like, you know, I got to go out and create my own income. And they would say, but Fred, you know, we work really hard, and, you know, if you went out and you got your degree, and you got a teacher's teaching degree, then, you know, this is the only way that we can get pay increases. So, you know, we want to go ahead and help the students. We also want to be able to go ahead and be compensated for it. And you know what? And I understand that, and I sort of backed them up for it. Did the teachers get hoodwinked? I don't know, but I'll tell you this, okay? When I saw a $2,500 across-the-board, you know, increase in pay for everyone within the school system, janitors, para-professionals, teachers that are not associated to the students, and sort of on that lower pay system, I think it's important that they did that, and I'll tell you why. Because if they're making roughly $30,000 a year, they're not able to sort of have a sustainable wage to pay their rents. They're not having a sustainable wage to pick up a mortgage. So, you know, that was fear for across the board. And then as far as the teachers, then you had to go ahead and gobble some of that money up and say, okay, we can only give you a 2% pay raise, and halfway through the year. But I think it was more across the board, and you want to go ahead and give the teachers as much as you can, as well as the whole school system. But you've got to go ahead and, and keep it where everyone is happy, not just part of them.
All right. You touched on the fact that you negotiate three-year contract deals generally. Lowell's is basically a one-year contract deal. It seems to happen a lot in Lowell. Either one-year contract deals, or a contract expires, and then the next one negotiated, it becomes retroactive, but by the time that one's agreed on, you're already close to getting it. Why can't Lowell seem to negotiate three-year or even longer-term teacher deals?
Well, longer-term teacher deals.
Is that the school committee's fault, or the teachers' union's fault?
No, the longer-term deals, you know, basically, that's sort of a state standard. You can't be putting out a five-year union deal, because we don't know how much money is out there. So we have to be really careful with our budgetary concerns and how much we're going to pay teachers. So three years is generally, sometimes you try to add on the fourth year with a renewal, automatic renewal for the fourth year. But that's, that's sort of risky, because, you know, what is it costing our school district? What percentage is it costing our school district? And that's, you know, that's a, a big deal. But why is there a divide on getting three-year contracts and, and working beyond the current contract, and then having all that retroactiveness? That's, that's part of the negotiation process sometimes. I have been in some of those negotiations, and we sort of, you know, it took us a whole extra year to implement that three-year program with all that retro money back. Sometimes that's dialogue, it needs to happen, and those conversations are important. But it's something that, you know, you have to visit during every negotiation.
All right. A couple more issues before we wrap up here. The big news over the last weeks, or if you read Inside Lowell, over the last month, is the influx of students that's coming. A huge influx of migrant families is coming in. Quite frankly, they've been pouring in over the last several years, and it's been a little quieter. But we're talking about huge numbers right now. The state is desperate, the governor has declared a state of emergency, she's grabbing the In-N-Out Conference Center. They were looking at the Jeanne Dark School. I mean, if, if it gets to the point where they're looking at school buildings as emergency shelters, you know you've got yourself a crisis. How is Lowell Public Schools going to deal with this? How would you deal with what's about to happen to the Lowell Public Schools a week or two weeks into the start of the 2023, 2024 school year? If you were sitting on that school committee, what would you be doing today?
There's an influx of migrants coming into Greater Lowell Tech as well. So what we did, we implemented more teachers to go ahead, or I'm sorry, more speech, language, language teachers to go ahead and be able to get the kids ready for traditional education.
Do you have a definitive number of how many students are already coming in? Because at last check, Lowell Public Schools has not been told how many to expect.
Well, what we had last year was about 200.
Into the VOK?
Into the VOK that were coming in. So it was a very large number. It's something, in the case of migrants, that we have to, we had to go ahead and sort of work over our, or rather, change over our, our whole administration of office that is watching those students and preparing them to enter the, enter the traditional classroom. With that being the case, that's probably something that we're going to have to do over in Lowell Public Schools. But the question is, how many are coming? And we don't know. Lowell doesn't know. We don't know how many are coming here over at Greater Lowell Tech. And I said 200, and as I think about this, it was more, it was a smaller number. It was more like 50 or 75. But realistically, we're preparing for larger growth numbers because of all of that that's, that's going to happen. With that being the case, you know, where are we going to get the funding to go ahead and hire people that speak, you know, alternative languages to teach students, you know, English, English language learners to be able to speak English, and then ramp them up to be in the classroom? That's a difficult thing to do. And the, and the money, you know, if this is a state-run program, or if this is a federally-run program, we have to ask the feds for more funding, because it's going to cost us a lot more money.
Do they supply funding? Do they supply that funding right now? Because you've said you've dealt with it for a couple of years. Do they send some entity, be it the state or the federal government, send some extra money to school districts so they can deal with this? And if so, how much is that amount, do you know?
There's no dollar amount that I know about, but basically, it's our October 1st numbers. But here's the problem. You know, it comes down to how many students are enrolled in our classes on October 1st. We send in that October 1st number to the, to the state, and they say, okay, we're going to give you X number per student. A vocational student gets about $20,000. A traditional public school student gets about $15,000. So then they sort of send that over. But the problem is, after October 1, there is no extra money. So, you know, Lowell's going to have to go ahead and try to apply, because of, you know, they're saying we want more migrants, and the feds are saying we're sending them over, and the Hilli administration says, come on over, we'll take them. But there's got to be some type of funding for it.
And therein lies a problem, because I would say 99%, if not 100% of these students are English language learners. So you need ELA programs and teachers. My understanding was, and these, these stats are three, four years old, it costs $14,000 to educate a public school student in Lowell, $21,000 if they're an English language learner. Now, you mentioned they give about 15, it was about 15,000. So we're in the same ballpark here, but if they're only giving you 15,000 per student, and it costs 21-plus thousand to deal with an English language, which is, you know, it's, it's all classified under special needs, I believe. But, you know, that's right off the bat, the state and the feds are forcing you to operate at a deficit. I don't care how much money they send you when you give those October 1st numbers.
That's correct. At that point, we're behind the eight ball. We're not able to go ahead and hire the teachers needed. We're not able to go ahead and have the smaller classrooms to prepare the students to get back into the traditional type of classroom. So it's vital that, you know, we're able to get the funds for the migrants that come into the city of Lowell, especially with the influx that's about to happen.
All right. Final question, longtime Lowell guy.
Longtime Lowell guy, all my life.
Give me your state of the Lowell Public Schools. As you sit here and you kind of look at it, not serving on the committee, but, you know, you've been up close, personal on school committees, school issues for most of your life, growing up in the city. How would you, how would you grade the Lowell Public School system?
I've been in the city of Lowell for a long time. You know, it's not really how I grade it, but, you know, let's, how is it perceived across the state? How is it perceived, you know, to new homebuyers? And I think new homebuyers are really important. You know, we've all had inflated, you know, increased property values, and so on and so forth. But, you know, if I'm a young family, 30 years old, 35 years old, I have a couple of kids, and I'm looking at homes, and I look at a school system, and the school system on Zillow is rated 2 out of 10, then I say, geez, maybe I don't want to, you know, purchase a home over, you know, in Lowell, because I want my kids to go to public schools. But, you know, I, but, but if I choose to buy a house alone, maybe I'm going to have to send my kid to private school. So, you know, so realistically, in all the years, and again, old Lowellian, you know, Rand Meyer Convenience Store for a long time, the public school image in the city of Lowell, the education, has really gone down over the years, and it needs a little shot in the arm. It needs, you know, it, it, it needs people to really oversee it, so that we can not only increase graduation rates, but increase MCAS scores and increase student enrollment, you know?[1766.33] You know, because people, we wanna have the kids, have the parents excited to send their kids to Lowell Public Schools. We're not getting that right now.
So some people may take, uh, take exception to what you just said, but to me, it's very true. Fred, again, I'm class of eighty-three, Drakehead High, uh, so I was in high school seventy-nine to eighty-three and we, we called it the joke. And nowadays, pe- there is a waiting list to get into the Greater Lowell Regional Technical High School. And a lot of those kids, yeah, they're leaving all over, but I think the biggest number is people leaving from Lowell. And even if they're not getting into the Volk, they're going to the charter schools, they're going to private schools. And I think that's, that's something that Lowell really needs to reverse if we're gonna grow as a community and get past some of the other problems that urban cities, gateway cities struggle with across the country.
And we pay our teachers handsomely. But if we have stagnant numbers, would, would layoffs all of a sudden become a concern because Lowell is not growing? We need to start a recruiting process to try to get students to understand or parents to understand what Lowell Public School Systems can go ahead and offer. And as far as the joke goes, that was not only in Lowell, but that was across the state. Well, let's think about that for a second. There's thirty thousand applications coming in for greater, for, for vocational applications annually, a technical school, and annually, and they're only accepting fifteen to sixteen thousand. We're turning away fourteen thousand kids statewide, you know, for vocational programming. It's one of the best programs, it's one of the best um, uh, programs you can offer students um, uh, uh, across the state right now. And we really need to implement them within the Lowell Public Schools.
You're turning them aside at a time where there's a desperate shortage nationwide of vocational plumbers, electricians, carpenters, et cetera. That's why I'm at least, I don't know if it's possible to pull it off, but your idea of making, you know, implementing it into the Lowell Public School Systems, more vocational education, I think it should be looked at. I, I commend you for doing that, for at least willing to have that conversation. Whether you can pull it off or whether there's something there that will, you know, that basically means it can't happen, remains to be seen. But I'm, I'm good, I'm always good with fresh ideas.
Thank you, thank you. And that is my platform. Um, and, but it's, but it's really something that we need to go ahead and look at. Um, and we also need to go ahead and, you know, keep an eye on that four hundred million dollar building project. Because, you know, it's hurting, you know, my taxes and it, it's increasing my taxes and I wanna make sure it's done right. And it's important. So there are a lot of things that we can do to benefit Lowell Public Schools through MCAS scores, through graduation rates, through new programs, through really overseeing the uh, uh, overall building project as well as, you know, having negotiations with teachers and making sure they're happy and making sure that they're there for the long term and benefiting our families and their students.
Should the school committee take a more active role in that four hundred million dollar high school building project? We're al- we're almost halfway through at this point, but it's funny, it seems that both the city council and the school committee have kinda turned it over to the school building committee, which don't seem all that engaged.
It's important that the school committee and the superintendent get involved in it because that's what's going to affect, that's what's going to affect our um, academics for the next thirty to fifty years. So, do you know, we need to make sure we're in the proper lab equipment because, you know, they like to use words like value adds, which basically means we're going over budget. So we're gonna go ahead and reduce the amount of labs that we have coming into the building or the amount of, you know, uh, uh, um, uh, books or the amount of computers. That's what a value add is and that's something we need to be really careful of. So when they start talking about going over budget, we need to go ahead and say, no, no. What else? What's another alternative? What can we do? And how can we not turn it over to the taxpayer? Because if we don't have enough computers and we don't have enough labs and the building project is all done, then the city of Lowell is gonna have to go buy those computers. And they're gonna have to buy those labs and they're going to have to buy those desks. So that's important that we have that conversation.
Alright, a lot of important topics there. How do folks find out more about your candidacy, find out more about your campaign?
Well, I'm knocking, uh, I'm knocking on a lot of doors right now. Uh, I am on Facebook. Um, I am going to put this um, interview up uh, so that people can um, um, learn about my candidacy. And um, you know, just keep an eye out for me. Um, and I will, you know, send you some mailers and share the information that I'm hoping to uh, share. Um, um, so that you can understand exactly, you know, what my candidacy is all about.
Alright, what's the Facebook page?
Uh, Fred Bahu, Fred Bahu.
Alright, Fred Bahu, candidate for Lowell School Committee. Thank you so much for joining us. Good luck on the campaign trail. We'll see you soon, hopefully for a debate, if not for another one of these sessions.
Okay, let's hope it's a, it's a debate.
Yes, let's certainly hope. So come on Stacy, join us. Thank you as well for joining us here on this latest Inside Lowell podcast. And stay with us for the most up-to-date election twenty twenty-three coverage from the most experienced campaign coverage team around, Inside Lowell. If Lowell is your home, this is your place. Till next time, stay safe, everybody.